Work at that time. And since we've been disbanded, we need to pass that on to the town.
Okay.
And let's see, that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Nicole?
I just wanted to drop off this money we were able to collect for the, um, putting the dock back in for the raft for the kids tomorrow, summer's coming back. And I wanted to thank, publicly thank anyone who had a hand in it, especially Lucas Jessman and Jesse Martin, who spent all day welding and repairing it because that was amazing. And just wanted everyone to know there was an overwhelming outpouring of contacts. And I actually couldn't even keep up after a while, that people that wanted to give in both talent and money.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Nicole, for getting that started, for taking initiative and putting up the call.
Are we in public comment or are we on the agenda somewhere?
We're on the agenda.
Okay.
You're on the agenda, yeah.
Actually, Nicole, how much was collected? Sorry.
Um, under seventies, there's some change there, I don't know, yeah.
How much was it?
Just under seventy.
Seventy dollars?
Yeah.
All right. Any more public comment?
Am I a public comment?
Nope, you are on the agenda, my friend. You're good. All right, we're gonna close the public comment portion. We are gonna move on to the oath of office for our new police chief. And I have here, actually, would like to do first is recognize Chief King, if you can come in for a minute.
Mr. King.
Sir.
On behalf of the Board of Selectmen, the town staff that we've worked with in the last sixteen years, and the general public in this town, we appreciate the service that you've given us. You've always been a pleasure to work with, and you took the job seriously, and you did it with a sense of humor, and I kinda like that.
Thank you very much. Come on, bring him in.
Hey, we got one for you too.
Oh.
It's not a lot, it's too much to say that we could put, more than we could say, um, that we could put on here. But in recognition of your leadership, professionalism, dedication to the Madison Police Department, the service to the town of Madison and its residents, congratulations on your retirement and a great time.
Congratulations to you. All right, here's the oath of office for a paper that we need to sign.
What, he's here? Is nobody here? Or they're here?
Everybody can pile in. You got it?
Ready.
Raise your hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, James Hefford.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
And affirm.
And affirm.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All duties incumbent upon me.
All duties incumbent upon me.
As Madison Police Chief.
As Madison Police Chief.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
Agreeable to the rules and regulations.
According to the rules and regulations.
Of this constitution.
Of this constitution.
And the laws of the state of New Hampshire.
And the laws of the state of New Hampshire.
So help me God.
So help me God.
This I do under the pains and penalties of perjury.
This I do under the pains and penalties of perjury.
Now can I get the pen so we can sell it on eBay?
No.
Thank you.
Good luck.
John, yeah.
Thanks, John.
Well, he sure knows how to clear a room, huh? All right. With that, we will move on to 2021 tax deedings. In the last two days, I did receive two payments, so I have two remaining properties. Two ten Allard Hill Road is a payment arrangement that the Board of Selectmen has with the property owner. And I just need to hear the board's decision to accept a deed waiver in light of the agreement.
Do you need a motion or just a verbal?
Uh, motion.
I'll motion to accept a deed waiver on two ten Allard Hill.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then the last one is tax map one sixteen, lot number sixty-seven. It's a vacant lot on Black Mountain Road in Madison Shores. All attempts to contact have failed, and the only phone number I could find is out of service, so.
So it's a vacant lot?
It's a vacant lot in Madison Shores Development.
And how long, unpaid?
Well, we're talking about twenty twenty-one taxes. So it's three years plus the first half of twenty-four.
There you go. Any discussion, Joe? No. Take it. There's no hazard to it. Lots checked in.
Yeah, I just need your motion to.
All right, I will make a motion to deed, what was the address?
It's a tax map one sixteen, lot sixty-seven.
Tax map one sixteen, lot sixty-seven.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Be back with the documents. All right. Mr. Simpson, Eagle Scout project update.
Do I get to use the cool mic and everything?
Who can?
You may have to sit down to use it though.
I may have to sit down.
He's got the mic on.
Okay, okay. Look at Cole's. I got it. All right, uh, my name is Trey Simpson. I am the Eagle Scout who came in, I don't remember how many months ago, honestly, and asked for a letter for approval to work on Atkinson Park for a restoration of said park. We're done. Uh, the park has been restored, uh, peystone has been laid down for the walking path. The new bench has been put in, gardens have been mulched, siding has been placed. I don't know if you've been through.
It looks beautiful.
It's pretty nice.
It looks beautiful.
Yeah, kind of very good.
Thank you.
And I am here tonight, not only to recognize our great success and how, how happy I am to have this back for the town. I don't want to take any recognition. I had a great group of people helping me, and I had a lot of donations from the town and other, and from the community, of course. But I'm here tonight to ask for another signature, as the Boy Scouts of America love, or Scouts of America, love signatures. And I'm asking for a signature that says that I've done all I promised I would do. I might have done a little more with the addition of the sign, which I would also like to mention. I have brought with me pictures of the sign. I didn't get to finish what I wanted to put into the sign. It's almost done and it's ordered soon, so I can't give you the physical one. But I do have the information that will be going into it, and it is just a historical information board, like one you'd see outside of, I don't know, a national park.
Can I see the picture real quick?
Of course. I have two pamphlets on the history. I tried to print a third, then my printer ran out of ink, or ran out of paper. So, sorry, I couldn't bring, give you the third. And I have a mountain of pictures. First three being of the sign, on different angles, and the rest of the park. And all new additions and anything that was changed or altered about the park.
And it's town property, it's not privately owned?
It was town.
So why we're here?
It's actually a classic road.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was talking about the, um, the history earlier with Linda. That used to be the main road that went straight to the inn across the street.
Yeah.
But then they changed it, and the inn owners were not too happy. The traffic was no longer going right in front of their, their business.
I've heard many.
I've seen pictures of it with, uh, state, state coach.
Yeah.
Pulling through.
I've gotten a few pictures from the Historical Society that I want to throw on the board as little, you know, infographics.
Well, the sign wasn't in the original scope, but I'm fine with it.
Nice for me.
It looks very nice.
It looks good.
Thank you.
Are those solar lights on the top too?
They are solar lights. They will just sit there and they'll light up at night. We went over there and checked the other night, they do actually turn on.
Always good.
Perfect. Well, that being said, thank you for your work. It looks great, and I will make a motion that we sign his, uh, project report.
Can I get it on most people?
Yeah.
On the official one?
Motion's been signed by John, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
It's beautiful. Really nice job.
I want to do some more updates on it later down the line, but I couldn't include that in the Eagle.
I think we'll benefit you.
Yeah.
Was the stone bench already there?
The stone bench was there.
Just buried back?
Yeah, it, I've seen it a few times, I knew it was there, and we went in to go look at it, and we had, I don't know, a crew of twenty-ish people. And only a few of us had actually seen the park. Thank you again. And everyone's like, there's a bench back there? We had a few garden club members that, I didn't even know that was there. I was like, look what a restoration does.
We actually found one on our property too, like in the tree line, we found a stone bench.
Hidden benches everywhere.
There we go.
Here's the last picture of the sign, if you'd like that.
Yeah, will we keep the picture or do you need them?
Uh, if you want the pictures, keep them.
Keep them on file.
Records.
It's beautiful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Big P Porridge Watershed Protective Association.
Okay, so yeah, I'm Peter Conrad, and I'm representing Big P Porridge Watershed Preservation Association, this is my uncle. Jim Torpey here is the vice president, he's with me. Basically, I wanted to just get you guys up to speed from, since our last visit, which was a, I don't know, it was a couple of years ago. But, um, I don't know, showing you pictures of what we're trying to do is, would kind of reaffirm what we're trying to do. I'll show you a couple of pictures here. Basically, we're trying to control the siltation coming into Big P Porridge, which is a kind of a gem of a pond, we want to keep it that way. So, a couple of years ago, this drone shot was taken after a rainstorm. And this is ragged coe on the, on the eastern side of Big P. This is siltation coming through the wetland and going right into the pond and just settling down. And this happens after pretty much every violent rainstorm.
And that's where the boat launch is?
No, this is a.
No, that's a private?
No, that's, that's a private place. Yeah, the boat launch is way over here somewhere. This is another shot, kind of just gives you an idea how that really filters out into the pond. This was a couple of years ago. In, in the interim, we've had, Conway has done that job that they've done up on MODOC, which seems to have trapped quite a bit of the siltation coming off of that uphill part. Not all of it, but quite a bit. And this, this graphically shows what we think is happening since the work they did. This was a storm, we had an inch and a half of rain in about an hour on Ja- July thirty-first. And this is the siltation that came in from that storm. As you can see, from, um, just, I don't think I got a better, I got a better picture of this, I'll come to, but I just wanted to explain what's going on here. Rock House is up here, MODOC's work was done over here. The MODOC water kind of curls around, comes down Allard Hill, comes through under the road of Allard Hill and goes into our wetland. And it gets sort of filtered in the wetland. The wetland is kind of overrun at this point, but we have a big beaver dam in there right now. Goes across the entire wetland, it's five feet tall. It's holding back about, you know, three feet of water, two feet of sludge right now. So that's helping. But you can see what happened here, the, the water that's coming downtown line, Brenner, that whole quadrant, skips right down the hill, comes right into this side of the wetland, and shoots right into the pond. So we're trying to eliminate that, because what Conway has done, you can see how much of a difference it has made.
Yeah.
And this is what that actually looks like blown up.
So where, where in relation, where is town line in relation to this?
Town line is probably right about here. Give or take, I don't know exactly. I mean, I didn't draw it on here, but it's, it's in, this Brenner kind of curls around, town line comes down into it.
So this is coming down, this is coming from town line? Where's this?
Well, it's one of the contributors. Brenner's another one. I mean, Rock House, Rock House in itself is, is contributing a lot of this stuff coming down. But what Conway did is, is capturing quite a bit of it, I just wanted to point that out. So what we're, uh, what we're here for is we're, we're, when we came last, we were asking for a letter of support from you guys, and Conway, and Rock House, and Idolwise, and we got all those letters. We applied for a grant because, um, to get three one nine funding is what we're trying to get. The first thing you need to do is get a watershed management plan, which we have done from FB Environmental. This is a draft of what they, what they've supplied. So with that, that in hand, a letter of commitment from the boards of Conway, Madison, Idolwise, and Rock House, with our application, goes into this pre-proposal form that's going in, in September, early September. So DES is gonna fund, they have like a five hundred thousand dollar pot they're working with, and they're gonna fund five or eight different projects. We're hoping to be one of them. So we put the pre-proposal in with all this, that's what we're here for, is trying to get that letter of commitment as part of our package. If we get approved through that, then we put a formal application in, in December. And then, at that point, um, there's a, you know, a good chance we'll be getting the, the grant funding. So the letter of commitment from you guys is basically, what it's gonna be is, uh, I, I, I gave, I think I did give you a copy of what we were looking for. It's pretty simple, but it, it's just saying that you would partner up with us. And what we'll have to do is come up with a match for this federal funding. So if we get a grant from the, from the DES, let's say we went for two hundred thousand, and, or two hundred, whatever, two hundred thousand grant, they're gonna give us a hundred and twenty, we have to match eighty. And that match can come, can occur in many ways. Our volunteer labor is part of it, um, running the, all the paperwork, that's part of it. What we're looking at from you guys is basically, in, in the conversation we had with DES the other day, any of the work you guys are doing now as maintenance, like if you're going in your greater road, which they just did yesterday, that can be considered as towards the match. It's not like you have to go in and build a check dam or something. It's basically, any of the maintenance that you're doing already is included. So it's not gonna cost any more than what you're spending now on your budget, is what I'm trying to say. The money we're getting from them, we're gonna use to create, um, areas that aren't being worked on, that need, uh, swales on the side of the road, needs, you know, armoring that, putting in the check dams so they can be cleaned and, and stuff like that. So it's gonna be kind of a concurrent, um, thing that we're gonna be working on. So we're looking at from the towns to just basically keep doing what you're doing. And as soon as we get the grant, any work that's done from that point on can be applied towards this match. And we're gonna try to do it over a three or two, two or three year window. We initially were thinking a year, and then DES said, don't do that, because you'll never get it done in time. And then the paperwork snafu is ridiculous. So we're gonna go for like a three year. So, um, we're hoping that, that that's gonna work out for, for everybody.
Okay.
So what, what is the plan? Like what, what, what's been suggested?
Okay, so, uh, FB Environmental went, went through, and they've come up with fifty-four different, can we, um, when we get the final draft, this is like the, uh, one that was done a couple of months ago, the final draft's almost done. Can we get them a copy of that?
Sure.
Because Idolwise asked for that this morning as well.
Sure.
Okay. So you'll have a copy of this. And there's, they've cited in this plan here fifty-four different areas that need attention, basically. Um, and the general thing is basically trying to, as you read through it, a lot of it is fix the road, re-crown it, make it like, in, in Rock House itself, I'll just use that as an example. If a road is supposed to be this wide, with a couple of swales on the side, and waters getting into those swales and running down, perfect scenario, over time, their road has gone from this wide to this wide, they're basically outside what would be, had been a swale. Any of the water that's coming down now, instead of going out into those points, is kind of sort of making its own channel down the road, coming down the road, pulling all the fines that are in the road from winter sand, runs down the hill, ends up in the pond. So we're trying to get the roads rebuilt, re-crowned, reditched, armored, check-dammed, sediment catches, whatever can, and it's all kind of laid out in, in the plan.
What part of, what percentage of the roads are Madison or Conway or private or?
I would say, uh, in this, the quadrant that we're kind of trying to concentrate on, now that it seems like Conway's area is sort of kind of working, and we don't have unlimited funds, obviously, we're thinking of concentrating on the Brenner, Town Line, um, all the roads, the names escaping me. Ingle, Inglis, there's, there's a bunch of roads in that little quadrant that, that I think there's ten or twelve.
Most of, most of those are Rock House roads, so.
Most of them are Rock House.
It's Town Line.
Town Line is Madison. And then as it curls onto Idolwise Drive, that's, part of that's Madison, then you guys go into Island Drive, that's Madison.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Did you want to bring up that calcium thing or not? Okay, so when you guys, there, there's a couple of schools of thought on this. The calcium chloride that's laid down on roads to keep the dust down. It also is a very good binding agent for the sand in the road. And there's, the school of thought of some scientists on that is the chloride part of that's not great as far as runoff into the pond. But the guy, one of the scientists that was at this, uh, one of the, uh, seminars we, we hosted, he was saying, when Ross Lenoi showed him that picture that I just showed you, that real graphic one, he goes, holy crap, we gotta do something about this. He goes, maybe in this case, the chloride situation is not that big of a deterrent. So they're gonna set up a little test area, they're gonna do some measuring and see if maybe, um, we can include the calcium chloride that's being put on the road as part of the match, because you're doing it anyway. And, and so that's ongoing as well.
Does that affect the loans on Big P?
The chloride?
Yeah.
Well, in, in the amount that would be going in, they, they were thinking not, but the, the, we're still studying that.
Okay.
So.
And, um.
But, but what a good, good point you brought up is, on, on this, this, what's happening here, the siltation that's coming in there on that really bad storm, where the turbidity, turbidity meter is showing it coming into the pond at a hundred and forty-three, which is a, a measurement of, of the suspension of particles in the water. Safe water for aquatic animals and stuff in a pond should be twenty-five or less. So that whole area is just not good. Drinking water is, wants to be like around one. So this is why we're kind of putting the pedal to the metal here on this thing.
Rock House, those, I can't remember, those are town roads or they private association?
It's a private association, and, uh, they're, uh, they're on board with us as well. The big part of their budget will be put towards the match. I mean, that's gonna be a large part of this whole thing. I would, Madison's is gonna be some, not as big, no ways near, I mean.
Yeah, no.
We're thinking. I mean, we haven't, we haven't put the numbers on that, but it, you, ten thousand or something over three years, I mean, you know. Like what they just did yesterday with the greater was probably, could be matched out at fifteen hundred dollars or something, you know what I mean? So I think it's, it's, it's kind of a, a, a win-win for everybody if we can get this thing.
Whatever Madison will be contributing is not an additional over and above your budget, it's already part of the budget. And we would just, you know, use that as a match.
Are there things that we could be doing now, if we're, you know, working on those roads, that we could work towards those suggestions, so we don't have to redo stuff?
One right away is, when we were in last time, I, I talked to the DPW guy, it was, uh, uh, god's name is escaping me now, he lived out in Freedom.
Sierra?
Yeah. And asked about putting in, just putting in silt socks in the town line ditches, and they did. And it worked great, I mean, it, it held back quite a bit, but you can see a silt sock is only this tall, it got overrun pretty quickly, and they've not been cleaned, and now the silt socks have kind of deteriorated. So just dropping those in again would be a help, um, or cleaning what's there. Short of, you know, like I said, getting it all cleaned out, ditched correctly, and armored with stone, I, I don't know what your, I know you guys are stretched thin, and I know your budgets allow them not doing stuff, but even, even proper road maintenance with proper road crown, so that the water's not running down the middle of the road, is a help. If we can get water off the sides of the road and into the woods, that's a help. And there's spots where that's happening on Town Line Road, but there, it could be cleaned up a little. I mean, and if they're out there working, that'd be great. So, yes, there are things that could be done, yeah.
Is there, could we see, is that, that's, you said it's, that's older. Yeah, so as soon as you have any information as to what we could be doing now, um, if you could share that, and we could get that to the DPW and see what they could.
I, yeah, that'd be, yeah, as soon as, well, we should have that pretty quickly, wouldn't you think?
Yeah, I mean, it, a lot of it is sort of just intuitive maintenance kind of things, like baking the ditches, lining with rocks so that it doesn't all run off. I mean, those are kind of things that I think if we just went out there and talked to the DPW guys, they would see, oh yeah, we could do this, we could do that, and then you could decide how much you wanted to do right now.
But does what you do now count towards our match?
It doesn't start counting towards the match until we've been awarded the grant, which, yeah, I know, unfortunately. Because like Conway's part of it was over two million dollars, and we can't use any of that. And then they just came in and dropped in a couple of new culverts across Allard Hill last week. Uh, they took out two culverts like this and put in two, you know, they've, they've really gone above and beyond over there, trying to help out, because they knew what was going on too. And it was in their long-range plan, they just sped it up, because they, they were trying to jump in and, and help out.
Yeah.
So basically, what we, what we need is, uh, that letter of commitment to put with our package, that you're, you guys are, are with us, and, uh, we're all rowing in the same direction. Right?
Yeah, that's it.
Okay. So as soon as we have the real draft, or I could leave you there, but I don't think it would help you that, I mean, it might change a little bit.
Yeah.
Do you want to leave this with them?
I mean, I think there's some changes that I think would make.
Okay, let's, let's wait, we have. Yeah. Let's get the, the real.
It won't be that long.
Okay. Any other questions?
I'm fine with it.
All right, so if you want to put that on like a Madison letterhead or something for us, when the time comes, then get that to us, thank you.
How soon do you?
Were the proposals going in September tenth or then, if we need that?
We're trying to put the package together by the first of September.
So.
Soon.
We like to wait till the last minute.
I'll make the motion that we send this letter and sign it out of session.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Whenever you get it together, I can pop it and sign it.
And I think the wording is written.
And these pictures, if you ever want to see them again, they're up on the web, we have a website, they're up on that too, so you can, you can look at them there.
What's the website?
It's, uh, what is the name, what's, is it just Big P Porridge? You had to ask.
I know.
You can type that up, it'll, it'll pop up.
I mean, if you Google it, come on.
Yeah, it'll pop up. My daughter does, I can see.
Nice.
All right, well, great, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Take care. So, we're actually going to be fun. Shocker, Heather wants to spend money.
Yeah. Um, yeah, we need goalie equipment, um, for our good hockey team, and.
We borrowed last year?
We did. I think it was bought in the seventies, but we had last year. But it kept her semi-safe, it didn't even, the pad that we had didn't even cover her full body. So if she got hit, it was gonna hurt. Um, but yeah, so, um, we've received some donations, um, to put towards that. Um, we've received, I believe, six hundred dollars in donations.
Wow.
Um.
I think we budgeted like six hundred for it, so that's fantastic if people are able to donate to cover that.
Yeah. Yeah, so the only thing I think that would be the extra cost besides the donation would be the uniform that we picked doesn't include a helmet, mask, you know, face thing, and it doesn't include the goalie stick, which is also different, short, shorter. So that's where that, that eight hundred and twenty-five comes from.
And it's covered completely by the revolving fund, which is donations.
Yeah.
I'm fine with it.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
Stick, yeah, stick it in the end, we'll sign it at the end of the year. Unless you're opposed. All right, bond information. Can you wave both?
Yes, so apparently there's two different schedules, July schedule and a January schedule. And not knowing what I was asking for, she just gave me the most recent schedule, which actually we would be on the July schedule, not the January, so some of these dates now make sense in terms of when we ask for money and things. So what ends up happening is we have a public hearing, there's a span between, like a month span between January and February. We'd have to have a public hearing to tell everybody that you intend to apply for a bond. Then that goes on, that, you have a public hearing, ends up on the warrant as a, an article that gets voted in, then we start this process. And it looks like it would be further, like later in the year when they, they do a process, I guess it's kind of called like a sale, I don't know if people get to bid on potentially taking the bonds and things, so anyways, that's the process, which makes way more sense now than it did the last time. Uh, but there'll be a new, there'll be a January twenty twenty-five schedule that will come out, but it isn't published yet, that's why I just kind of used the old July twenty-four one, twenty-four.
Okay.
So um, the, a little bit of information in here, as I look back at what we were talking about for numbers.
Nine hundred, is that right?
Um, actually, I don't think it was that high, did I, I think I put in one, didn't I?
E fifty.
Well, there was two numbers, there was one that we talked about at the meeting with um with Sean in the minutes there, oh, next page, I just missed one. There was some estimates that he had there, and then the next page, I think, has the estimates that they gave us in the proposal.
Okay.
So it's, it's in the, the ballpark of that E fifty-ish.
Yep.
But between.
How accurate do we have to be when we apply for a bond?
When I talk to the, the, that woman Jill, you want to be fairly close, you don't go way over just in case kind of thing. Um, because they take all those numbers and us, they use those numbers to come up with good
Terms, yeah.
Terms to everybody, yeah, so. I don't know if it's gonna be something we want to start RFPs now to have a good number by the time we have that public hearing.
I would think so, I mean, because we've got ranges right now, a low of six seventy-six to a high of
Seven eighty.
K fifty-eight.
Yeah, E fifty-eight on Sean's, that's seven eighty from MSK.
Yeah, but he has a disclaimer here in his whole paragraph.
Right.
This is just only conceptual.
I think, yeah.
And I think a little bit of that number that Sean had given us was with him, I think, helping us to work through it, because he would, you know, from his firm, have some charges too, so.
I think we need a.
We have to, yeah.
How do we know what we're asking for?
The problem is, how long is that number gonna last, because if we put it out now, and we don't, we do the public hearing in January, February, it gets voted in March, by the time we, or in the process, by the time we sign on the bond.
Summertime.
It's, who knows if that vote's any good anymore.
But if we do RFPs now, and they could look at it during the summer when it's easily accessed and all that, then we could just do updated pricing on, you know, costs and labor in, you know, before the public hearing. Do you know what I mean, like the price is gonna change, but they would at least be able to kind of assess the project now? And then we just ask for updates.
Yeah, I mean, we need to, I, yeah. I think we need to get some proposals now.
Yeah, I think sooner rather than later, I guess.
Also gives us a ballpark.
And I guess what I would ask is, you know, let's say we take a bond off for eight hundred thousand, and when the whole job is done, it's seven hundred thousand, we just don't draw the whole, is this?
Right.
Is this like a, like a building loan kind of thing?
Or, yeah, exactly, we don't have to take the whole thing.
Okay.
But we've also been paying interest on eight hundred, or?
I think you only pay interest on what you draw.
Okay, that's what I understand.
Mike, yeah.
And the window that it gives us for the bond hearing would kind of coincide with the budget hearing, so we could almost do a month's a night.
Yep.
But I have a phone conference call with Cordell tomorrow to ask him a few things, and that's one of the things, if he has any insight to having done these before, and if he could recommend an attorney on the list that we should use. But I'll get some more information from him. Can I reach out to Sean?
For the proposals?
Yeah.
Does that make sense?
And just, he knows who he might have some firm emails just to go right to. So that was just kind of an update from the, the box that I left you with last week.
All right. Anything else on the bond?
No, no options.
All right, rec field trip money.
I found out how we need to handle it. So um, I went to the Department of Revenue, talked with our advisor, and she was not of the opinion that using the revolving rec, put it in and pay it out of is not in its realm. But beyond that, she recommended talking to our auditors, because we'd be the ones we'd have to satisfy to show on our books what we did. Got in touch with the auditor, gave him some, the story and some suggestions that I thought would work, we talked it out, so ultimately, he suggested for this year, just because we didn't start off on the right foot, the field trip money that is just for the admission fees and that kind of thing, will go into the, a field trip income line, and then we will pay it out of the field trip income line. So it's gonna be, well, like he said, it'll be a wash, but at the time when we said it'll be a wash, I didn't take into consideration the, the fees from the
Square?
Square won't totally cover.
Right.
The, the, you know, see where I'm going with that, so.
We should still be safe though, as far as budget goes, two point nine percent on two thousand-ish, is that right?
I don't even know if, I mean, the field trip, some of them were ten dollars, the most expensive one was thirty.
Do you know how much we spent?
I can.
I think we estimated like four, three hundred?
Forty three.
I tried to pull up the square report.
Yeah. Yeah, the most expensive one was the very last one.
So it won't come out in the wash, is that gonna be a problem? I mean, there's, there's money in the budget to cover it, I don't think it's the end of the world that we have to cover the square fees this time around, but.
Yeah, I mean.
And it's coming out of the RTF?
No.
But.
Well, the.
Originally it was, but now.
I thought, I may have misread your notes, I thought for this year we were just finishing off, doing it out of the revolving fund, and then next year doing it through the budget.
No, no, this year, DRE didn't want us to do it that way through the revolving fund. The auditor said do it in, all in the, the jungle fund, but in an income line, and will pay out of the income line, which is unusual, but he'll know why we did what we did, so we won't throw up a flag. Then next year, we have to gross appropriate it, so we'll have to have a line in the budget for field trips for whatever it is, forty-three hundred dollars. And you'll have to just explain that those, that's there to be able to pay for it, but we are getting reimbursed on the other end of it.
Yeah.
That'll be a wash.
So we figured it out, we know how to deal with it next year, and we've got it covered for this year.
And we have a solution this year, so.
Yeah.
It's not perfect, but it's, it'll work.
That's the thing, I mean, the money's there from the parents, they've all paid, so we just gotta put it in the right spot.
There's about twenty-five hundred in, through the square, the field trips paid.
So just make sure when we're putting budget together for next year that we appropriate the right amount of money for that.
And we can still do it the same, same process.
Yep.
But it'll just get deposited.
Yeah.
And if that leads kind of into the, the next thing on the agenda with the square fees, if we were still gonna try and shut off the fee part of it.
Try to what?
We need to figure out how to charge them the fee. I have no idea how square works, haven't put in there, but we need to figure out how to put the fee on the customer.
That's been on my to-do list.
Fair enough.
Sorry, it's not done yet.
But that is the plan, I assume, as long as everybody's good with that, is to put that, that two point nine percent on the customer.
I did look into it, and Square actually has a calculator on what you should price your items in order to account for the fee.
That makes messy books though, right, still.
Well, just, for sake, so it's a hundred dollars for a week of summer camp, two point nine percent plus thirty cents. So you either price it at, you know, a hundred and two point nine plus thirty, you know, like.
Then do they charge another, if that's the amount you charge?
Right, so that's probably why there's a calculator, yeah, that's probably why there's a calculator to just also give you that. So really, you're doing it on a hundred and two point nine plus thirty cents.
Can't we just tack on a fee and make it part of the payment and be done with it?
Yeah, we can tap out our own without a category.
If we were gonna get a hundred dollars for the, for the
Three and a half percent.
So you say a hundred and four dollars.
Yeah.
Everything's included.
Yeah.
Because I happened to see one in the paper the other day, somebody was advertising something, three hundred and five percent right on top, right, right on top. So a hundred dollar item became a hundred and five dollar item.
Yeah. And then you have a lot.
Square charges two point nine.
Two point nine percent plus thirty cents per transaction.
So we charge a three and a half percent convenience fee on every transaction.
Yeah, it'd be easier to round it though.
You have.
Even to the nearest dollar.
Right.
We have to be careful with that, because, again, I was, I was reading up, I forgot, I'd done some homework, because the way, the way you charge, like Square doesn't allow you to charge the customer now, like it used to, and that's why they now provide the calculator. So that's why they suggest building it into the cost of your items.
Oh yeah, we can build it into our fee schedule pretty easily, we know what we charge for everything.
No, no, but not have it as like a.
I get that, but you, this is, you pay a hundred dollars a week if you pay cash, and you pay a hundred and five dollars and fifty cents if you pay on the credit card, and we build that into our fee hearing. And it covers the, the square fee.
Okay, as the person who has to collect the cash, how do you feel about that?
As long as I get the bottom line, if I get a hundred dollars, you know, to cover it.
Collecting cash or check, she's just collecting the fee, so it doesn't.
I'm not gonna worry about anything over that, the hundred dollars, however, but will we making a profit off of it? You know, I, what I'm saying is, if we say it's a hundred and five dollars for, you know, a week of camp, if you pay by square, but it only, the other side is a hundred and four dollars and fifty cents.
Or if it's a hundred and five dollars coming into Town Hall, there's the convenience fee of Linda's labor.
Which you charge.
Do you know what I mean, like it just, because it isn't, it isn't, it's still your time.
Yeah, it's a handling charge.
Yeah, exactly.
It's a handling charge.
Right, that's what I mean, yeah.
Yeah, you can justify it, it's not, and it's not crazy, so when it comes to a fee, that's the
Yeah, it's not, it's only ten dollars.
Right, you're not making money.
So we just make the price, and again, we'll decide, you'll decide pricing for camp next year anyway, I mean, maybe it goes up to one twenty-five, because one didn't cover all the supplies that were needed, you know, so just keep that in mind when we visit that for next year.
So, do we need to have another public hearing with fee stuff, or?
Yeah, I'd like it.
Whenever there is one, whenever, the, I, like, when, when do you think you would know what to charge next year for summer camp?
Well, because, well, this, this also affects sports, right?
Right.
So I need it now.
Okay.
Everyone's registering right now for three sports.
Are we getting, so they're currently registering at thirty-five dollars resident, forty-five non-resident.
Right.
And I don't think we've gotten a lot of those through the square.
We haven't, only a couple.
Seventy dollars.
Yeah.
So two.
Yeah.
So do we just, and it starts in a week or two? So is this just one of those, it's such a small amount, do we just leave it for now? Because we'd have to change the pricing for season.
Well, we've talked about this enough times, I need to figure out what we're gonna do. I'm tired of going back to it every.
Okay, I suggest, can I suggest that we leave it as is for the remainder of the year? Or because it's just the sports season, if we're going to change it, we'll change it for basketball, which starts at the end of the year. But given the current round of sports fees that are already being paid by people, leave that as is.
Basketball registration's December first.
Okay, so December first, we want to up it to forty and forty and fifty?
Still gonna make four. Paperwork's still gonna be dirty, but it sounds like there's no way around that by using the square.
Show more than your C T Ms, I gotta do.
But it's like, it's like what, what Mike does, right, I mean, you do a service charge if you use a credit card.
Yeah, but that goes.
It's all built in.
It goes directly to the company.
To the customer, the customer pays it.
Yeah.
It's a dollar and thirty-two cents, and we've had two people use it.
No, it's not the end of the world when it comes to sports, but I wonder if Invoice Cloud has a mobile product that we could use under our existing account. Because that would.
Right.
That would be easier, if it was possible.
Yeah, just bill them separately.
Yeah.
I can reach out tomorrow.
That would be great, I don't know if. Okay, so Mike's gonna reach out to them tomorrow and.
Thanks, Mike.
If we need to, we'll have a public hearing before December first on basketball registration goes out.
Right.
Because it is actually usually sixty kits. What?
Well, if we're able to do it this way, you won't have to, I mean, unless there's another reason to change the fee.
Right, then you won't have to.
Right, that would be the only reason.
Right, if you stay the same.
Yeah.
Their billing is their issue.
Yeah.
Is basketball the same, like just the fee, the thirty-five, thirty-five or whatever?
Yeah, yeah.
All right. Joy?
So first was the raft, which Nicole already mentioned during public comment. It's good to go, Jess Martin spent about five hours welding it, and she also said that the pontoons are solid, she said the frame was solid. She has the recommendations for how to secure the ladders better,
Yeah.
to weld those on in a certain spot to make them stronger, so even with roughhousing, they would still hold up. So she was gonna put together a list of suggestions and kind of estimate what she thinks it would cost, because that would then allow us to say, can we just, you know, shore it up and use it for another couple of years, or do we need to look at anyone? So she's gonna try to have that for us before the next Board of Select meeting. Oh, I was asked the spectrum contract, do we have any update on that, it's been a while.
We don't.
Okay.
See what I find out.
Okay, thank you. And then at the Budget Committee meeting last week, the CIP, Capital Improvement Plan, is a hot topic, and folks, you know, want to be able to flesh out the one we have, update it to go, you know, as we've already talked about, twenty, possibly twenty years out, to make sure that we're preparing for big costs. So they asked me to propose a working group of maybe three people, a member of the ABC, a member of the Board of Selectmen, and possibly a member of the Planning Board if they were interested. Wouldn't be any decision-making authority, it's just data gathering from the department heads as to what equipment, you know, we need to be putting on it, and then putting it into a spreadsheet.
Sounds like you were volunteering. As both a member of the Budget Committee and a Board of Selectman.
I don't know, maybe I represent the Budget Committee and we need a, oh, we can't do that, can we?
Not I, not I, my friend. I am busy enough.
Well, we can't do that anyway, but, yeah, so what are your thoughts on having a working group of a member of each of the?
If I could, I would.
If I, if I could, I would question Cordell on the legality. The C I P is a planning board function by statute.
Yep.
So, and it's definitely not the budget committees.
Nor the selectmen's.
Right, the selectmen just adopt what the planning board presents. But most recently, whatever the mindsets are, the planning board saw it as a futile effort, because it wasn't being, it wasn't being followed.
Right.
So it was like a wasted exercise. Maybe, definitely need to refine our process, and we can expand to whatever, twenty years, whatever, but, I just question whether anything can be done outside the planning board.
Well, that's why we would hope to have a member of the planning board.
But a member of the planning board is not enough, the budget committee has no input in the formulation of a C I P. That's a planning function, period, planning is simple by statute.
The budget committee is just looking to support the process, to try to help, to volunteer, to get the information needed, to get it into a spreadsheet.
I'm not trying to have an argument here, they can't be involved in development of a C I P. That's a planning board function, planning board members are elected.
Can you reach out to Cordell, or?
Budget committee is also elected.
Right, but they're not elected as planning board members.
Yeah, selectmen took it over because there was a lack of anything.
Well, just to get something.
Yeah, something, and what we did is we eliminated. I mean, the school was part of it at one time, and we just did away with it, and we said.
Right, and the school board tried to do their own thing.
Yeah.
And for a number of years now, they've been segregated.
Yeah.
And not official.
Yeah, within the past year, they've brought theirs, what they feel is to pretty accurate numbers. They've done a lot of work over the past few years refining it and changing it. Um, so yeah, it's just the, A B C was looking to help because it, you know, had fallen by the wayside, so if the planning board wants to take it back up again, I think the A B C, um, would just offer their support.
See what Cordell has to say, and then, I can bring it to the planning board, but I can promise you, they don't wanna do it. Everybody's busy, but I will bring it to them, once we hear what Cordell has to say.
And it could still be owned by the planning board, just with folks doing some administrative support.
Anything else?
Um, the, um, we've, I, I sent an email to, um, our current transportation provider. Um, our understanding was that it was going to be commensurate with the previous company last year, um, and significantly more. So I've just followed up on our understanding and some invoices that were, had, um, incorrect mileage, so.
What was that again?
The transportation company that Rec has been using for field trips.
Oh, okay, for, okay, I was wondering what transportation company it was.
Oh, you, you haven't been on casino trips yet?
I was gonna go.
Oh my gosh, I'm gonna get you on the bus. That is all I have, thank you.
Mr. Ruda?
Oh, just got a couple of things, the drawdown is right on target. We're at sixty-three point eight percent of the year, and we spent sixty-three point nine percent of our budget, we're right on target, heading in the right direction. I'm doing some work on the side to try to, maybe bring back to the board some adjustments for transfer station fees. Some of them are a little out of whack. It takes six months or years to get an average, so I'm taking a look at, as I'll be back to the board, with some numbers that are more realistic, I'm not sure where these numbers, I know where they came from. I'm not so sure they were well thought out, and I'm not talking about, I'm talking about it being a little high, not low. Looking at the fees we collect, um, this, we just finished the busiest week of the year, uh, which kinda fooled me, cause I kinda thought, oh, home week could've been the busiest week of the year, but it's not. Uh, we've collected to date forty-six thousand one hundred and four dollars, as opposed to forty-four thousand one fifty-seven, we're up four point two percent. In short-term rental, bags of rubbish, we have, uh, we've collected four thousand four hundred and sixty-nine dollars so far this year. Uh, the bulk of it has come in the last six weeks, so. That's it, that's all I got.
All right, well, I think the only thing I wanna do is say thank you to the Madison First Responders and our mutual aid for their excavate last week out, let's say, Charlotte Point Road, and, uh, commend them for their great work. So thank you guys. Linda?
Uh, no, I think I.
Chief Brooks?
Stole a little thunder, I did, I wanna point out, sorry. I thought, uh, Lloyd Jones at the Daily Sun gave us a pretty good article regarding that incident, and he didn't say as forcefully as I asked him to, but it was indeed two members of my department that stopped that fire. To the, you know, the growth of it, they stopped the advance, and they really are to be commended. We were fortunate hosting the firefighter one class, that those two individuals were at the station supporting the class that was going on, so they were, at the time of the tone, they were in the truck and out the door, so it couldn't have been any quicker. But they did, uh, phenomenal, and the mutual aid support we got was awesome, as I said in the paper. And always is, I mean, it's one of those time-of-day things, you never know what you're gonna get, or who's doing what around the county, but it was good. Difficult situation, but.
Wasn't that a battery issue?
Yeah, it minimized the damage near as we could, the most likely culprit for the cause was a charging lithium ion battery for a, some, uh, water recreation device. I don't really know what, some underwater something or other, I, I don't really know what the, I didn't see the device myself, but the insurance company took the remnants of the, what was left of the battery and the charger. But it was the most, most likely cause, we narrowed, the point of origin was very easy to determine, and then it was what was going on in that room that might've caused the fire, and that was the most likely culprit.
We, we do take lithium batteries at the transfer station, so if people don't want them hanging around the house, just bring them to us and give them to one of the guys there, we'll take care of them.
Right, but this, this was one that was placed on a charger to be used, and something, something went wrong with it. We did, uh, you went through your busiest week, I'm not sure it was our busiest week, but it was pretty close. We did seven calls on Saturday.
Well, I saw you Saturday afternoon at about four o two, I was coming up the road, and you were flying low down, heading the other way.
Right, well, we were there for the rest of the night, uh, we did about eight hours on a propane emergency. Local contractor backed into an underground tank and broke the stem right off. To the point where the propane technicians really didn't know how they were gonna deal with that, cause they gotta cover that hole in order to create enough pressure to burn off the gas. Other than that, you just got, and, something I'd never seen before, but he encouraged me to take a look through the gaping hole, that, that liquid, when it's not building any pressure, it just, it, it looked like boiling water. It was just, I'd never seen it before and don't really want to see it again, it's pretty, pretty scary, and there was a lot of gas in the air, a lot of people were reporting it to us when we were filling up, getting more water, and the good news is, the, uh, thirty thousand gallon cistern that we made Mr. Biggio put in, worked out perfectly. We used it, we drained it, we needed more than that, but it took about fifty thousand gallons of water, so. But, again, we, we handled it, I thought we were gonna be able to do it ourselves, but once we ran the tank, tank dry, I had to get a couple other tankers from mutual aid to help us out, but, that was a long one. Other than that, everything's going pretty well. We just finished the tax deading, trying to think, I think we're on, we're on pace to set some kind of record for motor vehicle registrations.
Really?
This year is gonna be, it's gonna be a lot different, I think we're seeing the, the impact of second homes becoming first homes, on top of stuff happening south of the border with their taxes going up a lot more, non-resident registrations are happening. It's just been incredibly busy, we're going through decals faster, a lot of different factors, but at the end of the year, we'll obviously know better, but. That's much of that, too.
Chief?
Uh, we are very busy, between Jake and I, we're still fielding lots of criminal investigations, uh, but we're keeping up with it, still trying to be proactive on the road. Bob and I were working on, um, basically, uh, the thought of getting rid of this Chevy Silverado Cruiser we have, uh, mainly in part, I don't, he's had this discussion with the board, it's not a patrol vehicle for us, it, it's not capable of doing what we want it to be. It's the original K nine car, um, we've spoken to the Effingham Fire Chief, who, uh, they're in dire need of a command vehicle. We've got a, uh, estimate for the cost to sell this Silverado for basically thirty grand. Um, and the Effingham Fire Department and their select board has all but agreed to, uh, to purchase it from us.
What year is it?
It's a twenty twenty-one, uh, we, Jake took it up to a crest, um, they got a, they went through it, um, estimated it to be between, it was twenty-nine and, I think, thirty-two thousand, um, and then compared it to the Kelly Blue Book value. Um, so it's, with the mileage, it's sitting rate at around thirty thousand, um, not thirty thousand miles, but about twenty-eight thousand miles. Um, so we, you kind of semi-agreed to the thirty thousand to sell it. With that, um, we'd wanna replace it with a, another Tahoe. The, the advantage to that is, you know, they cost a little bit more, but because we already have two other Tahos, being able to transfer all the equipment from one to the other saves an incredible amount of money. For instance, that charger, once that charger is done, I mean, I, I can't put anything up other than the radio into another car, um, unless it was another charger, which are, they're not obsolete yet, but they're not readily available. We've, we've been, we've contacted McMulkin, uh, down in Nashua, we haven't got a, a quote from them yet on their fleet Tahos. I'm still waiting for that, um, when I do get one, my plan was to talk to Linda about, um, the, uh, the tax exempt leasing corp, uh, getting an estimate, quote for that. So it's still, I'm very, it's very, I'm still in the logistical part of coming up with that number, but, uh, that's my long-term plan at this point. And we're not in a rush really, I mean, I don't have anybody to drive it yet, which leads me to, my other, um, item is, uh, I do have, uh, a certified candidate, um, I've done a background investigation. I'm waiting to hear back from the agency that they work for, um, that person that has a three-year contract. Um, so I'm waiting for that number to buy out that contract, they're at two years now, so, it's, you know, between, it can be between six or seven thousand, but that's a manageable number for us. And we've had to, we've had other towns buy out contracts from officers that were here in the past, so it's, it's, it's not uncommon practice for departments to put those in when they're trying to retain folks, so. And I have other certified candidates, you know, lined up for that fourth position as well, so I'm hopeful that, uh, very soon I can get us back to full staff. So I'll, I think later this week I'll be in touch with Linda regarding that.
The other candidates are for part-time, we're continuing with the part-time, or?
Full-time, they're certified police officers for the two full-time positions that we have open right now.
So we, we have already done the switch then, from that fourth position being two part-time people to?
Uh, not yet, I mean, that's just, that's another part of, I can eliminate, eliminate the, that person from, I mean, he's, he's not required to work full-time, but, um, he's able to, to, to work basically three shifts at this point for me a week. But I can eliminate that at any time.
No, I just meant in terms of, um, planning purposes, um, Chief King had changed the structure of the department for this year.
Right.
To be three full-time and.
Yep.
Two part-timers, whatever.
Yep.
So we're cha- we're changing the structure, cause I think previously discussed, it was changing the structure starting January first.
Right.
But we're changing the structure now, or?
Change in September, uh, maybe even October until I, um, there's, there's other timelines with this, this candidate I have. May not even be able to come till October, but, um, they're, they're the most qualified that I could find at this point, um, which is, I'm lucky to have done.
So one of the reasons Chief King said we were going to three plus two halves was to save on benefits, so now we're adding back in to.
Uh, yeah.
Yeah, we'd have to pay that benefits again.
And, yep.
It's on the budget?
Uh, yeah, I can find it, yep, uh, Chief King and I, or retired Chief King and I, I've thought through it, and, uh, I'm confident I can get that third position on the road, and it's just a matter of the fourth one.
As far as the truck goes, can't remember off the top of my head, but we are, are we obligated to send that up to bid if we were gonna sell it?
Oh, oh, I see what you're saying, um, I think you're obligated to.
But can we buy one? How do we buy one mid-year?
Yeah, we won't. We wouldn't be able to buy it.
If that, the replacement for that, would that be something that would go on as a warrant article next year, or did you?
Possibly, like I said, I don't, I don't have one, anyone to drive it right now, so.
Which color car is it, it's the?
It's the, uh, the Silverado pickup truck, the K nine car.
Brown.
Oh, it's black.
Black.
It's a black pickup.
So right now, you've got three Cruisers or four?
We've got four.
You have four, so if you get rid of, and, so you'd end up with three.
We'll put the fourth one on the horn.
But yeah, we'll have to. I mean, we'd have to go to D R A and make a declare it some kind of emergency, but it would be a high sell.
So the part-timers don't get a Cruiser assigned, they just come and use it as needed?
Normally, no, they'll either come to one of the full-timers residences to grab one.
But now we're adding a fourth.
Car, nobody touches this car.
I'd have them come, yeah.
But having a fourth full-time person, we now need to add.
Yeah, I'd wanna, I'd wanna have four, four, four cars on the road, yep. It's, it's hard, when we had three Cruisers in the past, you know, we generally had the two patrolmen sharing a Cruiser. And, you know, they're basically on the road, you know, every day, you know, from seven P M, seven A M to, you know, ten, eleven P M. You know, and they cycle through other cars too, uh, but the wear and tear just, you know, we get later into their, the life of the car, you know, after a few years, then we start seeing mechanical problems earlier than we normally do now, like I, I think I've had this charger all to myself for, uh, above, that's five years, going on six years. And the only thing I've had to do beginning now was just the year was some front-end work and a driveshaft. Um, so there's been very little repair costs, just because they're, they're not on the road, getting pounded on every day.
Yeah, well, we're, uh, looking at a six-year cycle, was that the plan?
We bumped it up to eight, uh, we, we normally were on a six-year cycle with the, with three Cruisers. Uh, so every six years, we. So every six years we, we replace that car. Now with four, we, I mean, we, we can easily get eight like that charger. I, I, I think I do the most motor vehicle at anywhere in this department. And I, I'm only at seventy-four thousand miles with five years, going on six years. In the past, we've gotten rid of cars with a hundred, five, hundred, ten thousand miles, so this certainly, the lifespan gets, you know, it's, it's a lot easier on the car. And I have twelve thousand dollars of equipment in that Silverado to move over. And I've, so I, it's
Yeah.
It's sitting there waiting.
All right. Well, we'd have to put a new car on the warrant for next year. Can you live with three cruisers if we sell the truck right now?
Absolutely, yep.
Do we owe anything on that truck?
No, we bought that, all right.
We could put that?
Actually, that might have been a lease.
Yeah, I think we just paid the last minute.
Yeah.
That's right.
Yep.
A few weeks ago.
If you can live without it and they're gonna give us what it's worth, I don't. I don't have a problem selling it.
No, I wouldn't either.
Uh, we just need a, I guess, a formal offer from them so that we can sign up on it.
Okay. I'll get that.
Can we just check to make sure there's no regulations around bids or anything for it? Because I know there are, there are certain things that have to be put out to bid and have to be sealed versus open and just trying to figure what category this would fall into. Thank you.
Anything else, chief?
That's it.
That's it? You were late. Heather?
Um, summer camp is over, yay, it was awesome. Uh, thank you to everyone and especially in this room that helped with my request. And, um, all the support, obviously, but it's, it was great. It was a good season, we had a ton of kids. We had some awesome field trips, no major issues. The lake days were incredible. Uh, we're so lucky that we can do that. I've already thought of changes for next year that would save us some money and help out, like trying to eliminate the buses on those lake days and really just have parents drop off at the lake, pick up at the lake, get rid of that bus completely, because it is a lot. So, yeah. Uh, some, uh, fall sports have started, are gonna start September fourth. Field hockey registration, soccer registration, and flag football are all on our website and Facebook. Freedom is kind of taking flag football for now. But they're all background checked and everything's legit with them, so they're good to go. We have people reaching out from Conway that would like to join our flag football team, so there's that. But yeah, now we'll have new field hockey goalie gear, which will be great. I'm, we have sponsors for the field hockey team, sponsored for the soccer team, so they will get new things as well. I think that's it for now.
Can, while we're on that note, can we pull the soccer nets down at some point?
Yep, thank you for reminding me. Nope, yes, we need soccer, but Osiphe last year mentioned they wanted to give us their old field hockey goals. I haven't seen them yet, but I did reach out to him to find out if those are still available to us, so we can have games here. If not, we'll just be a traveling team, you know, whatever. So I'll, once I take a look at those, I'll have to see if maybe they need a new net or something, but he seemed to sound like they were good, so, yeah. It's cool.
That's it?
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Shankford?
I didn't even think I was gonna be here, so I gave you the list.
Yep.
Yeah.
That's good.
So that's what we done the last two weeks, I guess. Today we put in a culvert up on Galloway Hill, Tasker Hill, let it fail. Gonna finish it up tomorrow, we got a pass for it. Truck's running good, the new trash truck.
Yeah.
Good?
You had a busy week this week.
Got one more trip tomorrow.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Just remind me, I, the FEMA. We're on our third project manager for FEMA, dealing with the town of Madison. So the newest guy, he's like circling back to, he doesn't like anything that the other two before him did on their side of the administration through their system. So we slow walk in one project at a time. We're almost done with the second aspect of Colby Hill though, dealing with all of the culvert work. I think in another week that one will be done and then move along. So there's, for the July sixteenth event, there's three open projects. Like I said, one is almost done. Another one, all of our work is done, it's just a matter of them putting the project together on the FEMA side. And then there's some odds and ends of stuff that's still left to be done to close out the last contract. And then after that is the December event with the Modoc Hill culvert, so. Uh, and that gentleman has been doing weekly Zoom meetings or whatever they call them, Microsoft Teams, I guess it's, every Wednesday. But he's on vacation this week, so no meeting this week, nothing's gonna happen this week. Pick it up next week and he wants to go instead of, they've been a half-hour meetings, he now wants to make them two hours every week. Because to try to get through, and, and it is what it is to get through all this stuff, but it's just not handy. I wish he'd given me the option of changing the time, because ten to noon could be busy on Wednesday, but do what needs to be done to get it, to get it done. Everything is progressing, albeit very slowly, but the slowness is blamed on me, but it's really FEMA and their change of personnel that slowed everything down. I have still submitted everything to them that I have to submit to them. And it's them dealing with all that information, that's the slow part.
Do you think they're purposely making that slow? I saw a, a newscast last week.
Oh, because they're running out of money?
They ran out of money?
They ran out of money as well here.
Yeah, I don't, I don't pretend to understand how they, how they budget, but there's certain things through the Congress and everything that they like, they give them. It's like dealing with a kid, they throw FEMA a couple hundred million dollars and then they have to come back and ask for more and they'll throw them some more, so it's a process. See, nobody has given me any official thing that like, like this, this money, it was estimated it's committed to the state of New Hampshire. Where the actual money is, I have no idea. But there's no, we're not, we're not gonna lose out on our reimbursement because it's committed to the state of New Hampshire.
I just saw down Ry, they hadn't even paid back from the floods from a year ago, and they said they ran out of money. He might run out of money.
But it might have been on that project. I don't, like I say, I don't know how they do it. But none of these people, and I've, I've been, a lot of them on these Zoom calls and nobody has, I, I mean, I suppose not that they would come right out and say, oh, by the way, all this time, well.
Signal track.
Oh, did you, yeah, did you talk about that tree cutting thing, or?
No, it's in the, it's in the purchase requisition to talk about them. I'm holding out that one till I get your notes on the computers.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Would you like to bring a link on this?
I use it.
Just the flag.
That's fine.
Just checking. All right, three dead trees.
Is there two documents there though?
Yeah, Adam, there was the waiver underneath.
Sorry. I missed one underneath, John. It didn't have the little fancy sticker that Linda gives me, so I'll have to think.
Those aren't my blessing.
All right. I assume that was that most recent stolen?
No, actually, the three dead trees, so there's, there's a dead one, you clearly see right by the shed that was actually killed by the moths over the last few years and over the last month or so, I've been getting a lot of, I won't say a lot, probably a half a dozen people have called the town hall, called my office, there's a lot of dead limbs coming down. Well, I guess one came down, I don't know if Heather, you, you, yeah, one came down on a picnic table and, you know, big limb, some of these big oak trees, and some of the limbs are, and we can't reach them even with an excavator and a basket, they're way up, so we're gonna hire somebody to climb up, but there is three dead trees there that need to come down. And there's several other trees that have dead limbs way up that they're gonna, twelve, I think there was twelve or thirteen different trees that had dead limbs
Yep.
high up that we need to take down and we could cut them, but I don't think, we, we, we all got, yeah. Maybe you'd come up with a basket or tree climbing box or something.
The deed waiver, there was, there's two RSAs referenced, we're supposed to check one?
Oh, yes.
It's usually the bottom one.
You're welcome to check it while you're over there.
Not an environmental concern, it's a.
I'm pretty sure I did this to you last time too, forgot to check it.
Yes. It's because of an existing arrangement with the board selecting.
I'll take it back. I'm pretty sure so. And with that, I will motion that we enter non-public session for RSA nine one A, colon, three, room number two. It'll be the hiring of any person as a public employee. Roll call vote.
No, I.
Joy, aye?
Adam, aye. Thank you, Joshua. I like money. Thank you.